Just to confirm for the record, Precinct 1 counting 26 voters, Precinct 2 with 36, Precinct 3 with 30, Precinct 4 with 31, and Precinct 5 with 28. That brings us to a total of 151 voters in the hall, and I know there are others who have checked in. So we do have a quorum of our required 150. I would like to call the special town meeting to order for June 10th, 2013, which is an adjourned session from the April 22nd special town meeting. I would also like to note for the record that the warrant has been duly posted and served in accordance with our town bylaws, and it's been certified by the constables and the Board of Selectmen. At this time, I'd like you all to please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I'd also like to introduce and welcome Marine Private Jared Mays, an Abington resident who has recently returned. Jared has just returned from boot camp. I want to honor Jared and thank Jared for your service and for being here tonight, and we'd like you to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please be seated. My microphone stand's not working tonight, so I'll be holding the microphone. I hope you'll bear with me. I would also like to recognize and welcome a couple of the guests. We're very happy we're here in attendance. Representative Jeff Deal is here at the rear of the room, along with Senator John Keenan. Appreciate your efforts on the residents of Abington's behalf. And I'd like to now welcome to the microphone our Congressman Stephen Lynch, who has honored us with his presence tonight. Congressman Lynch, I'd like to say a few words to the good residents of Abington.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sean, for that kind introduction. Thank you, sir, for your service to our country, and I know you've got your mom there with you, too. I appreciate when one sir, one person serves in a family, I know that that whole family serves, so I appreciate your family's service to our country. Thank you. Normally, I'm in Washington on Monday evenings, but we don't have votes till tomorrow afternoon. And I know you've got 25 items on the warrant, and Mr. Moderator has given me a brief amount of time just to do a Washington update. First of all, I want to congratulate Abington on your 301st birthday. I was here for the 300th, and we'll see how long I last. But just one small item here. We recently, through our cooperation with the Abington Fire Department, were able to receive an award of $44,232 this past April. I want to thank Chief John Nuttall for his great work. That was a fire grant that'll be used for equipment purchases for 60 new self-contained breathing apparatus bottles to replace expired equipment. As far as Congress goes, last week, we had two classified breaches on information on two National Security Administration programs. One dealt with a sweep of telephone numbers for millions of Americans over the last seven years. And then later on in the week, we had a breach of security on a program called Prism, which gathered content and data from the Internet. Both of those were operated by the National Security Agency. While the programs were legal in very narrow terms, Congress is now conducting hearings and investigations on whether or not the use of those programs was in line with the understanding of Congress. As I said before, the programs have been going on for seven years, which was not the understanding of Congress, so both the Senate and the House will be having hearings and investigations over the next couple of weeks. On top of that, and I happen to serve on these investigative committees, on top of that, we're also in the midst of an investigation over the targeting of certain groups by the IRS in connection with applications for 501(c)(4) status, tax-exempt status. Those investigations are ongoing. And on top of that, we're also in the middle of an investigation with the incidents in Benghazi where Ambassador Stevens and three other Americans were killed. Last week, we had depositions and reports from several people who were on the ground during that incident, and those investigations are ongoing. We have not yet begun the investigation regarding the collection of Associated Press reporters' phone numbers. That is going to be undertaken by the Justice Department, and then later on by the Judiciary Committee and the Congress. But it's been a busy few weeks in Congress. I do want to say that we are taking up the Transportation Security Bill. We took that up last week in the House. This week, the House will vote on the Defense Authorization Bill, which sets the amount that may be spent by the Defense Department. All of this is limited by the sequestration process, which requires Congress to cut about $1.2 trillion from the federal budget over the next 10 years. So that is basically the work for the week in Congress. Recently, I was a candidate for the United States Senate. That did not work out well for me, but I did extremely well in the town of Abington. And while I didn't win that race, I certainly remain very, very honored and consider myself privileged to be able to go to Washington to represent the people of Abington. God bless you all. Thank you for being involved in town meeting, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Lynch. Again, welcome to the special town meeting of June 10th. My name is Sean Riley, and I am the town moderator. If you haven't already done so, we ask that you please pick up the handout that's actually entitled "Handout: Warrant Recommendations and Motions," which is available in the back table. That's what we'll be using throughout the annual town meeting. We do have a brief special town meeting, which we are in right now. There are some handouts out back for that. That actually is going to be a little bit more abbreviated than what we originally proposed, which is good news. We've, as I mentioned, a very special, very brief special town meeting, which originally was held on April 22nd. The special town meeting warrant contains five articles, but four of those articles are no longer necessary, so that meeting will be very short. And the annual town meeting warrant does contain 25 articles, including, of course, the operating budget, which will basically determine the amount of services and level of services will be effective as of July 1st in the year following upon your vote of approval tonight. Please allow me to introduce our town clerk, Leanne Adams, to my left, our town council, Lauren Goldberg, our assistant town manager, Dory Jamison. And I'm going to reserve the introduction of the other gentlemen sitting over that table for the beginning of our annual town meeting. Mrs. Adams will be serving as the clerk of this town meeting, and will be recording the wording of any motions and results, any votes taken by you, the resident voters. Attorney Goldberg will be available to answer any legal questions which may arise, and together with the clerk, they will try to help me as the moderator run this meeting smoothly in accordance of all of our required procedures. Seated to my right is the Abington Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is comprised of residents who volunteer their time to review and analyze each article which is voted on at the town meeting. At the start of our annual town meeting, I'll ask the chairperson to introduce each member, and she'll also make some introductory comments to summarize the budget issues at that time. For those of you who are new to town meeting, we ask that you follow the following rules and guidelines. Number one, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and I will recognize you at my earliest available moment and ask you to stand and speak, but please use one of the two microphones, either the one in the middle of the floor, or you can come up to the front at the podium. Please give your name and address before you begin speaking, so that the town clerk can properly record the minutes of the town meeting. Number two, please make sure all comments and questions are relevant to the subject matter of the article being discussed, and do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into debating of an issue. If I believe that a moderator is straying from the issues, I'll have to direct the speaker to limit his or her portion of the debate to that issue. We also ask that speakers limit their time at the microphone, so others will have an opportunity to be heard, and so we can finish our town business in one evening. A motion to move the question will be taken up as any other motion from the floor. For those of you who are new to town meeting, a motion to move the question is a request to end all debate, and then to move directly to vote on the article at hand. To move the question, a person must be recognized by the moderator, and then make the motion to move the question immediately. You cannot take the microphone, recite your opinion about an article, and then try to shut off the debate from others by making a motion to move the question after you're done speaking. Please also understand that I, as the moderator, have the right to rule a motion to move the question out of order if I believe that motion is unfailly or prematurely limiting the voter's rights to hear or answer questions, or to better understand an article or an amendment. Finally, all registered voters, only registered voters may vote here at town meeting. If you are a non-resident or a non-registered voter, you must sit in that designated section, which is to the far side of the basketball hoop. Those people cannot vote in any of the articles. There are a handful of people who registered late who will not be allowed to vote for the special town meeting, but who will then join the crowd and be allowed to vote for the annual town meeting. Department heads and members of the press are allowed to sit to my far left. Any person who is not a resident of Abington needs the town meeting to approve their opportunity to speak first. In accordance with our charter, department heads and superintendents who do not live in Abington but who do work for our town are allowed to speak and can also sit with their relative, relevant committee or board. I must appoint a deputy moderator for this evening. I ask that you then now approve Bob Kelly as our deputy moderator. This needs a vote. All those in favor of approving Bob Kelly as our deputy moderator, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. First time in a long time. Understanding that many of you have babysitters at home this evening, we ask you to turn off your cell phones, or turn down your ringers, and take any telephone conversation out into the lobby, so you do not disturb others around you. Please understand that in order to debate or discuss an item at town meeting, the subject matter must be in the warrant in the form of an article. The Finance Committee and others will be resenting motions tonight to either approve an article as it was printed, or to propose amended wording with updated information, or to oppose an article, which we call passing over an article. If you have any questions about procedure, or how to do something, please feel free to ask me, and trust me, you're in very good company if you feel that you don't understand everything that you will hear tonight. So we'll move right along to our special town meeting, which has the five articles. With the meeting's consent, I would like to combine the vote to pass over four of the five printed articles in our special town meeting warrant. The request for funding items in Articles 1, 3, 4, and 5 are no longer necessary, as all of those expenses have been previously paid prior to this June 10th town meeting. So instead of making four separate motions and taking four separate votes, I'd like to move forward by combining Articles 1, 3, 4, and 5, and asking for one vote to pass over all four articles. If anyone has any specific questions about any of those four articles, please feel free to stand and speak after the motion. Our goal is to help make this town meeting move forward as efficiently as possible. So at this time, I'd like to ask the Finance Committee Chair to make the appropriate motion to combine the vote on the four articles.
The Finance Committee moves to consider Articles 1, 3, 4, and 5 together, and to pass over all four of these articles.
So if everyone understands the motion, Article 2 is going to be the only article that we need to take action on to actually move money. Articles 1, 3, 4, and 5 have already been resolved prior to this town meeting. Is there anything to discuss on the motion to take one vote to approve passing over Article 1, 3, 4, and 5? If not, all those in favor of passing over Articles 1, 3, 4, and 5, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll now move right to the remaining article in our special town meeting, which is Article 2.
The Finance Committee motions to approve Article 2 as amended and as printed in the handout.
In the handout and in the warrant that was posted, Article 2 concerns the payment of a balance due to waste collection or the trash bill for the town. And there is amended and updated wording and numbers totaling $56,309, transferring existing funds from the Veterans Aid, the IT salaries, town clerk salaries, tax title, visiting, border health training, border health telephone, and border health printing accounts to pay the $56,309 and pay that expense. Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I guess a two-part question. One, can you just get a brief explanation why this funding is needed? Two, can I also be an explanation as to, is the program working? Is tonnage down? Is recycling up? Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, too.
Is there a representative from the Board of Health who would like to answer some of those questions? The moderator recognizes Board of Health Agent Sharon White.
Are you okay with that? Oh, okay. Can I have your questions again, please?
My name's Rick Collins. I live at 74 Orange Street. The questions were, just for a brief explanation of the deficit, and just a quick overview, is the program working? Are we seeing tonnage down? Are we seeing recycling up? I do personally enjoy the barrels, so I just want to see how it's working.
I can explain the deficit a bit. When we put the invitation for bid out last year, we had first thought we were going to get reimbursement for both the toters for trash and recycling, and we found out later that the reimbursement was only for the recycling toters. Secondly, we added in, if you remember, the five grandfathered condos later in the year, which added to the cost. And the third part of it was the trash program, or automated trash program, was originally supposed to start July 1st, and based on the delay of getting the carts ready, it didn't start to August 1st. So we were under the old cost until August 1st, if that helps. Yes, the program is working. We have seen a reduction in trash and an increase in recycling. I think it's a much cleaner program out there. Does that hopefully answer your questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. White. The Finance Committee motion is on the floor to approve paying the $56,309,000 by transferring the money from the listed accounts in the stated sums. Is there anything else to be heard on the motion? Otherwise, all those in favor of the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. And I'd like to declare this special town meeting, unless there's any further business, a special town meeting. Special town meeting to be adjourned at 7:52, and at this time, at 7:52. Confirming once again that there is a quorum in excess of 150 required, according to our checkers. I'd like to call the June 10th annual town meeting to order, and I'd like to once again certify that the required warrant has been served and posted in accordance with the town bylaws, and has been certified by the constable. We do have 25 articles to go over, but before we start anything, I would like to introduce our chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Michael Frainey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, people, for giving up your time tonight to get our work of the business of the town accomplished. First, I'd like to, in memoriam, recognize the following people. William J. Fennell, Wilhelmina Messier, Edward J. Mulligan, George Snow, William C. Swan in red green leaf. I'd like just a quick silent meditation for these people who have given so much of themselves for our town. Thank you.
Before we go any further, Mike, I was asking, I would like to add to that, if you could keep in your thoughts and your prayers, the family of Governor Paul Salucci, who served our Commonwealth for many years as our governor. And also, it's always hard when you lose a youngster in this town. I'd like to keep the family of Joey Glenn in your thoughts and prayers. Joey passed away suddenly a week ago today. And you keep your thoughts and prayers for Joey's parents, Joseph and Susan, and his sisters, Kelly, Sarah, and Stephanie, and Ashley, in your prayers. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a little thing. As you well know, our town manager left a month or so, a month and a half ago, I guess it was, and he left us in a little bit of a turmoil where the biggest problems we have in this town are trying to formulate the budget, trying to go over all of the different areas of revenue, and put something together that we could present to you people. When that happened, it left a big void. And first and foremost, I want to commend the financial team for the work that they did. The Finance Committee and the department heads, in the spirit of cooperation, they did come together as a town, and we worked very hard, they worked very hard to get this done, and did a great job. Included in that was, we also had a dilemma of not having a town manager. And we asked, and he didn't accept, Mr. Leo Provost as an acting town manager. And we talked about, you know, Leo would try to make it. He did not, because he is the ultimate professional in my book. He did not want any money. He did this job on his own, for the town that he loves, and he did an absolutely outstanding job. And for that reason, I would ask you people to recognize Mr. Leo Provost, and thank you. Thank you very much. And lastly, as you know, or probably have read in the paper, we have a gentleman from the town of Kava, Mr. Richard LaFawn, who's going to be our town manager. I would like to introduce Richard, and ask him to please stand to be recognized. And I did ask Ms. LaFawn if he'd like to speak, and he said respectfully, no, and that's why we already like him. So at that, I'll turn it over to the financial team. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Frainey, and welcome aboard, Mr. LaFawn. This is Rick LaFawn's first day on the job, so we invited him to town meeting, but we're going to save him from putting him up in sacrificial way in front of you tonight. So the rest of the Finance Committee, the Selectmen, the financial team, and Mr. Provost will do our best to answer any questions you have. So we'll move right along to Article 1 of the annual town meeting. And again, we're looking at the handout that was on the back table. If you don't have one, I urge you to get a copy. And there also is an impact statement, a one-page impact statement, that Mr. Provost and the department heads put together to give you a little bit more of a background on what's being discussed, for your consideration, Article 1. Article 1 is to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate or transfer from available funds inappropriate from departmental receipts such sums as necessary to pay salaries and expenses for the town for the fiscal year 2014. All is set forth in the detailed budget handout, or take any other action relative thereto. Of course, I'm not going to read through all the sources in the budget. It is in front of you. We will be going through it, but I would like to ask the Finance Committee Chairperson, Maureen Jansen, to offer a summary to you of where we are and where we'd like to go.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah, if I can take just a few minutes, I wanted to just have a couple of comments. First of all, I also want to welcome all of you to the town meeting tonight. Again, I want to thank you for attending and for taking time out of your busy schedule to participate in tonight's town meeting. We could not be here without you guys, as you all know. Also, I want to welcome Mr. LaFawn. Welcome. Look forward to working with you. And so tonight, as you've heard a little bit, we'll be asking you, as the members of the town meeting, to approve a town budget for fiscal year 2014. We're also going to be asking you to consider some sort of housekeeping items, including paying some outstanding commitments, approving some existing revolving accounts, as well as consider some petition articles that have been submitted by other residents. As we get started, I'd like to take a moment to thank all of those who were involved in preparing for tonight's meeting. The town's financial team, particularly Leo Provost, thank you, Sue Moquin, the town accountant, Dory Jamison, the assistant town manager, and Jack Pistorino, deputy assessor. I'd also like to thank all the department heads and the support staff at the town hall for working together on this. A special thanks to the school superintendent, Peter Schaefer, and assistant school superintendent, Felicia Moschella, for their work on the school side of things. As well, I'd also like to thank the Board of Selectmen and the school committee for their support with regard to this whole budget process. Lastly, I'd like to thank and introduce the Finance Committee, who has been working on a volunteer basis for at least the last six months on this budget and also on the associated articles. The Finance Committee has spent numerous hours meeting with department heads, article petitioners, legal counsel, and the finance team to gain an understanding and appreciation of the budget, the articles, and also the impacts on the town. As such, I'd like to acknowledge their role in preparation of the budget, their commitment to the town, and their unique resident perspective that they bring in volunteering for this duty. As you guys have probably met them before, too, but Barbara Cristofaro, Sean Tyler, Stephanie Eastwick, Cindy Whiting, Chad Lovett, Rick Frainey, and Tom Cook. Also want to thank Debbie, thank you, guys. Thank you very much. And also Deb Libby, who is our recording secretary, who's not here tonight, but I also wanted to give thanks to her as well. So now, onto the business at hand. The budget process began pretty much in January, when the former town meeting directed each department head to formulate a budget for FY 2014, which would provide for their department's needs, their salary, and their expenses. Each department diligently goes through their staffing and expense requirements and creates a budget proposal. Over the following months, these budget proposals are edited and amended to better reflect the anticipated revenues of the town. Revenues including things like taxes and excise, new growth, as well as state and local aid figures. Ultimately, the town manager's budget, which you will see in the handout under column 4, I think it begins on page 2, that town manager's budget is a version of a budget proposal. Other factors to consider when creating a balanced budget for 2014 include paying for the snow and ice expenses for this last winter, as well as absorbing into next year's budget positions in the school department, which have been paid for over the past two or three years through government grants. To approve and accept the town manager's version of this budget would effectively create a $1.1 million shortfall, if you were to add up that budget and compare it to the expected revenues. This would create a deficit, an unbalanced budget, and quite frankly, one that we cannot afford. So the department heads, the finance team, the Finance Committee began looking at options to balance the needs of the town as well as the expected revenues. The budget that you will see in column 5, I think it's 5, which is called the Finance Committee Recommendations, is the result of working with these various groups to come up with a budget proposal which balances the needs of the departments and that revenue picture. There are a few components to this budget, and the most important is that the budget is predicated upon the town meeting's approval of taking $535,000 out of the town's stabilization fund to help balance this budget. Now, the stabilization fund, people refer to it as a rainy day fund, a savings account, that kind of thing. It's basically, when there is free cash available after it's certified, that money can go into stabilization for, like we said, basically, a savings account. That stabilization account has been built up over the last three years due to expenditure constraints. We've had a couple maybe better years, if you will, with regard to some of the money coming back into free cash. Anyway, so it's been built up over the last three years or so, and this budget, although we don't recommend lightly taking money out of your savings account, we feel at this time that it's really necessary to utilize those funds and put them in to offset the snow and ice budget from this past year. That's that $535,000 that we're going to be asking that you guys approve us moving in and using for the budget. It's the expectation and the recommendation of the Finance Committee that when the town's free cash is certified, again, this fall, that the stabilization fund be replenished with available free cash. So basically, the way we're considering it is borrowing from our savings, if you will, to help shore up this budget, and then when free cash is available again in the fall, putting that money back into savings. If we don't do that, and I'm sure you're going to hear a little bit more about this, if we were not to do that, that would leave us $535,000 short in the existing budget, if you take into account all the salaries and all the expenses that are in the town. So the Finance Committee would absolutely recommend that you approve this. Otherwise, you can read the impact statements as to what the result would be. Again, sort of a short-term borrowing against our savings. Anyway, to get along with things, the Finance Committee would, again, be asking you to support the Finance Committee's recommended budget in Article 1, as we collectively, along with the support of the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, the finance team, and the department heads, we believe this is the best budget proposal that we have right now, which balances the town's needs and the existing anticipated revenues and expenditures. This is how we foresee taking care of existing staffing, existing services, the less impactful way that we can provide to you at this time. So now, all that is about one article, and of course, we have 25 to cover. So I want to give it back to you guys, and I wanted to, again, thank you for your time and your continued support and your attention here in governing your town. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. I'd like to recognize Leo Provost was our acting town manager. If you'd like to add any additional language, any additional input before we get into the meat of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening and welcome to town meeting. You know, the problem with going and speaking after the chairman of the Finance Committee is that she's so down thorough, she hasn't left an awful lot for me to say, other than duplication. However, that should give all of you great comfort, because she and her team have poured through this budget in the last six weeks, leaving no rock unturned. It does give me comfort, I'll say. You'll hear tonight that this is a consensus budget, and that means that all departments, boards that have been involved in this process, with the support of the department heads, agree that the right way for us to go is to use our savings account, stabilization, to cover the amount of our deficit which relates to the However, that should give all of you great comfort, because she and her team have pored through this budget in the last six weeks, leaving no rock unturned. It does give me comfort, I'll say. You'll hear tonight that this is a consensus budget, and that means that all departments, boards that have been involved in this process, with the support of the department heads, agree that the right way for us to go is to use our savings account, stabilization, to cover the amount of our deficit which relates to the snow and ice, as we had a rather difficult winter here. We simply cannot go back to the dark days of FY nine, 10, 11, and go backwards. We need to go forward. We cannot take the worst-case scenarios and devastate our departments by reducing staff any more than it is. As you'll see from the impact statement, we've already cut out a substantial amount of money in order to attempt to balance this budget, and we think that the final step is to borrow from stabilization and repay it in the fall. It just seems to make a great deal of sense, to me anyways, and I hope it does to you as well. A little unknown fact is, if we actually had to reduce positions, do you know that we wind up paying the individual that we perhaps lay off 36% of their salary to stay home and do nothing? And that translates to every three positions that we cut, we have to cut a fourth position just to pay for the three. And that just doesn't seem to make sense to me either, especially in this particular situation. So I hope that you will consider this effort of borrowing from stabilization, repaying it in the fall, and support the finance committee's budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Provost. Before I ask Mrs. Jansen to read the motion to approve the budget article, I'd like to ask just generally, are there any general questions about the budget itself or about the proposal to fund part of the $39 million budget with a transfer of $535,000 from stabilization fund? Any general questions? We will be going through each page of the budget in just a moment. Okay, they're being done. Maureen, I need to ask that you actually put the motion on the floor to approve the budget as presented and recommended by the finance committee.
Thank you. I'd be happy to do that. The finance committee moves to approve the FY 2014 budget as printed in the handout entitled "Warrant Recommendations and Motions" under Article One, and as funding thereof, therefore, to appropriate from the funding sources and in the specified amounts as printed in the handout under Article One, under the title "Complete Motion Under Article One."
So the actual detailed numbers are on page eight and nine of your handout, if you really want to know the nitty-gritty. That is the motion that is now on the floor, which would fund a balanced budget and which would include and require a transfer of $535,000 and change from the stabilization fund to balance the budget. At this point, what I'd like to do is what we do traditionally, is we go through each page of the budget one at a time. If anyone has any questions, we'll go by each page, so we're not jumping around the budget, or if you have any proposed amendments, we need to discuss what, each page one at a time. So if you could turn to page two in the handout, and you'll see the spreadsheet, the beginning of the spreadsheet, and again, what is being proposed to you is for your approval, is the far right-hand column, the Financial Committee Recommendations. The other two columns are there to give you kind of a comparison of what we had for budget last year, what was initially proposed by the former town manager, and what is now the consensus budget on the far right-hand column is what we're looking to approve. Are there any questions on page two for department numbers 1130 through 1120? If not, we'll move to page three if you turn the page. Are there any questions for any of the line items from Article, sorry, Department 1350 down through 1920, which ends with Town Office Building? If not, turn to page four. Are there any questions from department numbers 1950 to 4210, ending with Highway Office? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I don't know actually which department it's a fall under, but this seems an appropriate place to ask. Is there anything in this budget that addresses the town's substance abuse problem?
I was going to say, in here, there's nothing specific that addresses that. There's not a line item for substance abuse. However, I would say that would probably fall under the police budget. There is something in here in one of the revolving accounts. Hang on a second, which?
I can help you. In Article Two, one of the revolving accounts we have each year is a revolving account.
Which is on page 10, by the way. Sorry, Sean.
Yep, where fines received relating to marijuana go to the police department for the purchasing of drug prevention materials, which I believe they use in the school system and elsewhere through the town for drug prevention. Is that any question, Rick?
Is it the belief of the board of selectmen and anyone else that this is the appropriate measures to be taking for a town that's sending 600 people a year to treatment facilities and seeing multiple deaths a year? Might be more of a rhetorical question at this point, but I think the town needs to take a look at this a little bit further in future budgets and figure out there's something better we should be doing.
Thank you, Rick. I think I'm going to take that as a rhetorical question. I think it's more of a concern of a police budget in general and something we can always keep and consider in the future. Are there any other questions for page four? If not, please turn to page five. Are there any questions for department numbers 4220 down through 6300, ending in Recreation Commission? If not, please turn the page to page six. Are there any questions in department number 6910 and ending at 9450? There being no questions. Page seven lists the enterprise and special revenue funds, which are certain funds that generate revenue from water, sewer, things like that, and some of their funds are used to pay some of the other expenses in our general fund. Is there anything on page seven that's a question? If not, we will go right to a vote to approve the budget as presented in the finance committee's recommendation, the far right-hand column. I would like to remind you, because we are including a transfer from the stabilization fund, this requires a two-thirds vote to approve the budget. If it is obviously a voice vote that I can consider to be two-thirds, or if it's unanimous, then I can declare it a successful vote. If it is close, we may have to have a standing vote, I just let you know that. So, if not, any questions? All those in favor of approving the budget and the motion presented by the finance committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We will move on to Article Two. And I do want to thank and extend all the work that the finance committee did in the financial offices and town council, Dory, all the work you guys did to organize that budget. And while I have the microphone, we do have one vacancy on the finance committee. It is usually a body of nine. If any of you resident voters out there would like to perhaps join the finance committee, please approach me, give me a call anytime you want, and we love to get that as a full membership of nine. So Article Two is to see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments under Mass. General Laws 44, Section 53 and a half of the fiscal year beginning July 1st, or take any other action relative thereto. The different revolving funds are all listed in the chart that is on page 10 and continues on to page 11. Maureen.
The finance committee moves to reauthorize the revolving funds for certain town departments as printed in the warrant under Article Two.
The finance committee makes a motion to reauthorize those revolving funds as listed. Are there any questions on the revolving funds printed on page 10 and 11?
I'd like to amend on the planning board, from $35,000 to $45,000. We've consistently had $60,000 in there. This is money that is received from developers, that is given to the town, and then we spend it out to the engineer. So it doesn't, it's not town revenue. It's money that's needed to pay the engineer for engineering work that they do. Some of the projects that we have will go on for years, and that money stays in there for years. So I think it'd behooves the town to keep it at least $45,000. It doesn't add to the tax rate or anything, and it's money that the developers have paid for inspections on their subdivisions.
And for your knowledge, that's Mr. Wayne Smith from Summer Road in Abington, also the chairman of the planning board. So Mr. Smith makes a motion to amend the planning board's revolving fund for an FY 14 limit of $65,000 instead of $35,000. I'm sorry, $45,000, I heard you wrong. $45,000 instead of $35,000. Is there anything to be heard on the amendment? If not, we'll take a vote on just that right now. All those in favor of approving the amendment to increase that dollar amount from $35,000 to $45,000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Are there any other questions on any of the revolving accounts? If not, we'd now like to take one vote to approve all of the revolving accounts as listed and as now amended on the planning board item. All those in favor of approving the revolving accounts as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you. It's unanimous. We'll move on to Article Three, which is to see if the town will vote to authorize the town to accept money equal to the state's annual release of funds as the state's share of cost of work under Chapter 90, Highway Improvement Funds. This is an annual article that we need to approve. It's more of a formality. This is something that you may see in a future town meeting, which we're going to be putting together what they call a consent agenda, one of the regular articles that we try to get every year. We're going to try to combine with others in the future. Ms. Jansen. Mrs. Jansen.
Ms.
Ms. Jansen.
The finance committee moves to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Motion is to approve Article Three as printed. Is there anything to be heard on Article Three? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, please signify by saying no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Articles Four, Five, and Six are all payments for sick leave buyback. Article Four being for a firefighter EMT, Article Five being sick leave for a firefighter EMT, and Article Six being sick leave buyback for a retired police sergeant. Again, we'd like to vote these all together as one in the hope that we can move the town meeting along any further, unless there is any sort of question regarding any of Article Four, Five, and Six. If not, Mrs. Jansen, Ms. Jansen, would you please read the motion?
Sean, you can just refer to me as Maureen. You're welcome. The finance committee moves to consider Articles Four through Six together, and for such purposes to raise and appropriate the total sum of $39,784 to fund sick leave buyback for three persons, all for the specific purpose and in the specific amounts detailed under Articles Four through Six of the warrant.
So the finance committee asks you to approve Articles Four through Six for the total sum of $39,784. Is there anything to be heard on this motion? If not, all those in favor of approving Articles Four, Five, and Six as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, $14,000 for student transportation services for Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for 2013-2014 school year. Maureen.
The finance committee moves to raise and appropriate the sum of $14,000 for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2013-2014 school year.
Again, this is another article we see every year. Is there anything to be heard on Article Seven? If not, all those in favor of Article Seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $18,000. To be added to that appropriated under Article 13 of the May 21, 2012 special town meeting for the purpose of building a support base for the construction of a new fire department radio tower to be located behind Station 1 on Bedford Street. Maureen.
The finance committee moves to approve Article Eight as set forth in the warrant.
Anything to be heard on Article Eight? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Nine, see if the town will vote to transfer from water receipts reserved the sum of $109,173.47 to the Town of Rockland General Fund for Abington's portion of a pension cost assessed to the Town of Rockland for the fiscal year 2008. Maureen.
The finance committee moves to approve Article Nine as set forth in the warrant.
Anything to be heard on Article Nine? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Nine, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Ten, see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a contract for the disposal of the town's solid waste prepared not to exceed 20 years, commencing on January 1, 2015. I won't bother to read the rest of the article that is there in front of you. The motion from the finance committee.
The finance committee moves to pass over Article Ten. And if I can give you some background on that? Okay, the finance committee recommends passing over this article. At the times when we were going through the warrant and coming up with our recommendations, the finance committee, the finance team, and the board of selectmen do not believe that this is needed at this time, as we are currently in the first year of a three-year trash contract. The board of selectmen and the new town manager may wish to consider this in the future.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there anything else to be heard on Article Ten? The finance committee motion is to pass over Article Ten. All those in favor of passing over Article Ten, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Eleven, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum of $39,000 for the development of mapping the town's stormwater outfall pipes and related work to bring the town into compliance with stormwater outfall mapping, et cetera, et cetera. Maureen.
The finance committee moves to raise and appropriate the sum of $39,000 for the development of mapping of the town's stormwater outfall pipes and related work to bring the town into compliance with the regulatory requirements described in detail under Article Eleven of the warrant.
The finance committee recommends approval of Article Eleven. Is there anything to be heard on Article Eleven? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Eleven, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Twelve, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum of $725,000 for the development of a comprehensive water resources management plan, which will be the town's master plan, blah, blah, blah. Maureen.
Well, it's my understanding that this is going to be amended or taken off. The finance committee actually took another vote earlier in our meeting at 6:00, and so the recommendation is to pass over Article Twelve.
The finance committee makes a motion to pass over Article Twelve. As I understand it, this action is not needed. It is something that can be redressed, and the sewer board and the selectmen are in agreement with this. Not hearing anything else. The motion is to pass over Article Twelve. Are there any questions about Article Twelve? If not, all those in favor of passing over Article Twelve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Thirteen, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds or borrow, $175,000 for the FY 2014 portion of the assessment enclosure of the Abington Sanitary Landfill, which for those of you who don't know is on Groveland Street. Maureen.
The finance committee moves that $175,000 is appropriated to pay costs of the FY 2014 portion of the assessment enclosure of the Abington Sanitary Landfill, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow this amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, 24 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore.
The finance committee makes a motion as printed in the handout on page 15. This will require a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions on Article Thirteen? Two-thirds because it's a borrowing article. If not, all those in favor of approving the motion for Article Thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Fourteen. Article Fourteen is a proposal to amend our town bylaws regarding permits to dump, which I will not read. Now, the selectmen, I believe, took a vote.
Did we pass over? Okay. The finance committee motions to pass over this article.
The finance committee makes a motion to pass over this article. To save time and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, the selectmen have asked that you pass over this article, because town council has recommended some edits to clarify some of the language. They'd like to resubmit this article at a future town meeting. Is there anything to be discussed on the finance committee's motion to pass over Article Fourteen? If not, all those in favor of passing over Article Fourteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, what I'd like to do at this time, I'm sorry, no, let's proceed to Article Fifteen. Article Fifteen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, $10,000 to enter an agreement with Old Colony Planning Council for updating the 2006 open space plan. Maureen.
The finance committee moves to raise and appropriate $10,000 to enter into an agreement with Old Colony Planning Council for updating the 2006 open space plan, including updating demographic and environmental data and the inventory of present and prospective town open space and recreation holdings, reconsidering Abington's goals and objectives, and revising the seven-year action plan.
Is there anything to be heard on the motion for Article Fifteen? If not, all those in favor of approving the finance committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. At this time, I'd like to ask the town meeting to consider, I'd like to take Articles Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five out of order and vote on those articles, because those are the only articles remaining that have anything to do with the expenditure of money. And then we'll go back and revisit Articles Sixteen through Twenty-One, which are all non-monetary articles. I just need, I think it's important that we make sure we get our budgets and our expenditures finished tonight, in case there are any long conversations about the non-monetary articles in Sixteen through Twenty-One. That will require a four-fifth vote. Finance committee will make that motion?
So moved.
Finance Committee makes a motion to bring Articles Twenty-two, Twenty-three, and Twenty-four and Twenty-five forward out of order.
Can you repeat the numbers again?
Yep, Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five, so that we can address them. And then we'll go back and revisit Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, and Twenty-One. All those in favor of moving those four articles forward, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. I have to do that again because it's a four-fifth vote, so I'll have to do a standing count or it has to be unanimous vote. So, all those in favor of moving those articles forward, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Thank you, it's unanimous. All right. I'm tempted to talk. Article Twenty-two, my friend. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds in the sum of $4,540 for the purpose of providing matching funds to the Abington Cultural Council. Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article Twenty-two.
Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Article Twenty-two as the funds are not available. All those of, anything to be heard on Article Twenty-two, I should ask? All those in favor of passing over Article Twenty-two, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article Twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to transfer from accounting salaries line items. They're all as written there. For the $4,800, the $3,280, and the $8,080, to pay the salary of the new town manager or take any other action relative thereto. Maureen.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Finance Committee recommends approving Article Twenty-three as presented.
As printed in the warrant.
As printed in the warrant. Is there anything to be heard on Article Twenty-three? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Twenty-three, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article Twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to transfer from accounts and amounts listed below the sum of $20,957.94 to pay for the severance of the former town manager or take any other action. The accounts and the amounts are listed there totaling $20,957.94. Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Twenty-four and transfer the funds as specified from the identified FY 2013 accounts as printed in the warrant, except that account number 001630051200500, Park's Temp Salaries, should be replaced with Highway Salaries account number 001420051200500.
So the Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Twenty-four with the amendment printed therein on page twenty, so that the funds will be taken from Highway Salaries instead of Park Temp Salaries, the amount of the 265201. Is there anything to be heard on the motion for Article Twenty-four? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Twenty-four, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Unanimous. Article Twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to transfer from Park Temp Salaries, account number ending in O500, the sum of $7,347.99 to the FY 2013 liability line item to pay for a deficit in this account. Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves to transfer from FY 2013 Highway Salaries the amount of $7,347.99 to the FY 2013 liability line account number to pay for the deficit in that account.
Is there anything to be heard on the motion for Article Twenty-five? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Twenty-five, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll now go back to Article Sixteen, which is on page sixteen of your handout. Article Sixteen is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adopting the following temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers as follows. And I'm not going to read the entire text of the article. It has been posted on the town website and available in public places therein. It's proposed by the Abington Planning Board. A zoning amendment will require two-thirds vote, like a motion from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee moves to amend zoning bylaws to include a new section 175-83, all as printed in the warrant under Article Sixteen, to establish in the town of Abington a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers.
Thank you, Maureen. The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning bylaws as motioned. Is there anything to be heard on this Article Sixteen? If not, again, this will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of approving Article Sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Two-thirds vote carries, declared by the moderator. Article Seventeen. To see if the town residents will vote to demand the cable subscriber franchise PEG grant fees derived from license contracts be directed into a trust or enterprise account regarding Bill H. 1451, maintained by the town accountant, and that unused grant funds assumed to date by the access corporation be transferred back to the town by close of business Tuesday, April 30th, 2013. An approximate amount of $500,000 is estimated to be on deposit in an undisclosed account or to take any other action relative thereto. This was a private petition article. Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article Seventeen.
Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Article Seventeen. I would like to recognize Town Council Lauren Goldberg to offer some advice to the town meeting residents. And then I'd like to ask the petitioner if she'd like to speak after the conclusions of Town Council's remarks. Attorney Lauren Goldberg from Colton, Minham Page.
Mr. Moderator. So I've been asked to describe the legal effect of this vote or of any vote taken under this article. And essentially, my opinion is that any vote taken hereunder would be advisory or directory rather than mandatory. In addition, because it essentially asks the Board of Selectmen to exercise their discretion in a matter in which they solely have jurisdiction. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that the monies at issue have been granted to the Cable Corporation, which is a private nonprofit entity, by virtue of the licenses between the town and Comcast and Verizon. Under one of those licenses, there's actually a provision that says that the money goes directly to the Cable Corporation. And under the other license, it says that the money goes to the Board of Selectmen, the town, or the boards designee. And in that case, during the cable negotiations for the license, it was specifically contemplated that there would be a Cable Corporation created, again, a private nonprofit entity. And that entity was created, and swiftly thereafter, the Board of Selectmen designated that entity, the Cable Corporation, as the boards' designee for purposes of receiving the funds. I also want to clarify that the funds that are collected are not automatically viewed as quote-unquote "public funds." The franchise fees, which are the fees that are designated for PEG purposes or public access television purposes, may only be spent for that purpose and are in fact created by the rate payers rather than collected, for example, through taxation. So those funds are not deemed to be public funds. They're never received by the town. They go directly to the Cable Access Corporation. Also, I understand that there's been questions about reporting, et cetera, from the Cable Access Corporation. And that corporation is regulated by state law. It has certain obligations it has to meet under state law. And the Division of Public Charities of the Attorney General's Office is the entity that oversees that.
Thank you, Attorney Goldberg. Just so everyone knows, PEG, P-E-G, as mine is standing, is for public education and government, which are the channels you see on your local cable TV station, depending if you have Comcast or Verizon. Moderator would like to recognize one of the petitioners or the main petitioner, Kristen Murch. Kristen, if you could give your address, please.
653 Plymouth Street. 653 Plymouth Street. Oh, Attorney Goldberg, I understand exactly what you were saying. Initially with the subscriber fees, our understanding is that they were to support the public education and government channels, our local channels. It's the lack of fiduciary responsibility of the access corporation to act in good faith with the performance of their organization as well as the conflict that exists with government being officers of the access corporation that licensed the fee. So we're asking that the money be brought back into town account as it was supposed to be. And then any funds derived or on deposit at the access corporation be transferred back so that we can move forward with the grant.
Thank you, Kristen. Kristen, before you go, to be fair, right now there's a motion to pass over or to deny this article. If you'd like, you have the right to make a motion to approve the article. We'll take a motion or vote either way. But if you'd like to make a motion to approve your petition article, please just say so.
I have a number of pending public records requests that Town Council has offered to review. We could broach this again with further research.
Okay. So we'll leave it be with the Finance Committee's motion right now is to pass over this article.
Well, pass over is to decline it altogether, correct?
Correct, is to reject this. You have every right in the world to bring another petition at another town meeting if you gather more information or have another... So yes, it's up to you.
Ideally, I feel we should come to a resolution with the town, with the new town manager.
Well, just to make clear, I think what part of Town Council was saying is that town meeting really doesn't have a lot of authority to direct that that be resolved in any way. But you have a right to submit a petition to ask that it be discussed to a limited extent.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I don't know if I can. I believe Town Council is advised, sure, Town Council is gonna say what I think I just said.
Mr. Moderator. Yes. When I started out, I was saying that a vote under this article would be directory rather than mandatory. It couldn't force the Board of Selectmen to take any particular action, but essentially it would be a sense of the meeting. If you permit me, Mr. Moderator, it sounds as though what you're saying is that you're willing to explore this further with the Board of Selectmen and/or the town manager, and so you're not asking for action under the article at this time.
That would be correct.
That's fine. The motion right now is to pass over. If that is approved, that doesn't mean you can't come back. It's just that we're not going to approve it tonight, is what that motion is. Okay? So is there anything else to be heard on this article? If not, the Finance Committee motion stands to pass over Article Seventeen, which would in effect reject this article and not approve the article. So if you vote yes, you are not approving this article. All those in favor of passing over Article Seventeen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Murch. Article Eighteen is also a petition article to see if the town will vote on the following resolution declaring the month of May as American Wetlands Month. And the resolution is printed therein. I won't, while it is printed, it's only about two or three paragraphs. Motion from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee moves to approve the resolution set forth under Article Eighteen of the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve this article. Is there anything to be heard or said on Article Eighteen? If not... I'm sorry? You gotta talk into the microphone, I can't address it. They're asking, but it's June already. It's true.
Well...
Would the petitioner like to explain? Is the petitioner here? What's that? It's May every year, so...
Well, if I, there was discussion. The petitioner did meet with us. And again, if he was here, he could bring it up. And it was not a unanimous vote for the Finance Committee for a lot of the reasons that you guys were saying. One, that it's June, and this speaks for a different month, but of course that month will show up at some point. The other thing was whether or not Abington can really designate a particular month as American Wetlands Month. So again, there was mixed feeling here. The thought was, does it do any damage? No. The other thought from the other side of the table was, maybe this is something they should go to the Board of Selectmen with. And, you know, any one of us could try to designate any month as whatever you want it to be. So in our world, there was a majority in favor of this, but either way, I think it could be brought up again as someone has mentioned it has been. Again, but that was our voted recommendation.
And again, this is just basically a resolution. It doesn't have any real legal effect that we're aware. Oh, joy. Moderator recognizes Mr. Lawrence Keogh.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Lawrence Keogh, 80 East Battery Street. I move that we amend this to be Abington Wetlands Month, and it be next May.
Can we do that? If it's a petition article, can it be amended on the...
Town Council is advising me that the idea for this came from some sort of national program where they were trying to get towns and cities to name May. Mr. Keogh withdraws his amendment. The motion right now is to approve the article. Is there anything else to be heard on the article? If not, all those in favor, are you standing to speak? Okay, you're stretching? You make a motion to pass it over, that's fine. But we have a positive motion to approve it, so I have to go with the positive motion. If you don't like the positive motion, you'd vote against, you'd vote no. So is that clear? So the motion's gonna be to approve this article. All those in favor of approving Article Eighteen, please signify by saying aye. All those in favor of, all those against the article, please signify by saying no.
No.
The noes have it. The article does not pass. Article Nineteen. To see if the town will vote to create a Community Preservation Act Committee to study and evaluate, present recommendations on the implementation of the Community Preservation Act as the article is printed in your warrant? Maureen.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article Nineteen.
Could you go on with your explanation?
You can probably read it there, but let me give you a sense of it. The Finance Committee recommends passing over the article because the way it's written is very restrictive with regard to the composition of the committee as presented. The article seeks to establish a committee which would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And as written, the Finance Committee feels the article limits the Board of Selectmen with regard to how the committee would in fact be structured. The article also does not reference all the guidelines such a committee would need to adhere to, such as the terms of the members, who they would report their findings to, et cetera. So we suggested to the petitioner that he bring this in front of the Board of Selectmen and ask them to form such a committee, which will include these types of details regarding the structure and the composition of the committee. The Board of Selectmen has the authority to create such a committee. It does not have to be done at town meeting.
Correct. Town meeting can create a committee, but Selectmen can do it also. Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Article Nineteen. Is there anything to be heard on Article Nineteen? If not, all those in favor of passing over Article Nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article Twenty. Now, Article Twenty is a proposal to create a new bylaw that I have to rule out of order. The way it is presented, it is a petition article, so we can't change it. It has to be printed as presented. It is asking us to change a bylaw and to enact a bylaw, but it already has section numbers. And what we think happened was the petitioner may have just copied this bylaw from another town and wanted Abington to use it, but it doesn't numerically fit in. And it also refers to an agricultural commission that doesn't exist in the town of Abington. So the moderator is ruling Article Twenty out of order. We'll take no action on that. We'll move right to Article Twenty-One.
And Sean, just so you know, we did also meet with the petitioner about that, and he was aware of that.
Right. He has the illegal ability to resubmit a corrected article at a future town meeting. Article Twenty-One. Article Twenty-One is to see if the town will vote to restore the land known as Griffin's Dairy referenced at Quick Claims Deed, Books 17426, page 101, containing 64 acres of land, more or less, and being land within the towns of Abington and Rockland so acquired by Article Thirty-One of the May 4th, 1998 annual town meeting, back to agricultural use pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 61A, and pursuant to Article Thirty-two of the annual town meeting, Second Session, June 8th, 1998, authorize the Board of Selectmen to seek and receive grants from the County of Plymouth, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the United States Government, and any subdivision thereof, or any private nonprofit organizations to maintain and improve said land under agricultural usage or take any other action relative thereto. This again is by petition. The Finance Committee's motion.
The Finance Committee moves to pass over Article Twenty-One. Can I get some background? Again, we met with the petitioner on this as well. And the Finance Committee voted for our recommendation of passing over the article. And the vote that took place in town meeting, May 1998, clearly indicated that this land would be acquired and available for, quote, well, quote, "for public purpose, including open space and recreation." This article would limit the use of that land.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to pass over Article Twenty-One. Is there anything to be heard on Article Twenty-One? If not, all those in favor of passing over Article Twenty-One, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article Twenty-two.
We did it.
We did. That's right. Ladies and gentlemen, before you leave, I just want to make two quick public announcements because Nancy Reed would just be all over me. Please pick up your concert agenda for the summer concerts. They start on June 30th. They're wonderful to go to. I encourage you to get to as many as you can. I also want to take a moment to congratulate the Abington High School girls softball team for another incredible year as Division One, I'm sorry, Division Two number-one team. And the Abington High School baseball team also ranked number-one in Division Three baseball. They went all the way to the self-sectional finals, so we gotta be proud of our kids. Thank you very much for attending our town meeting. There is no further business on the warrant. I'd like to declare that the annual town meeting for June tenth to be adjourned at eight forty-three P.M. And thank you to our cable TV crew and the janitors here at Abington High School, your custodial staff, all your help.
Thank you again for attending.